I would like to call on the regular meeting of the Planning Commission to order. The time is 6:33 and today's date is November 15, 2023. Now, Planning Commissioner Clerk Ron Callen, please.
Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Commissioner Power. Commissioner Walbert.
Here.
Vice Chair Hamadi. Chair Bowie.
Here. Now we will do the flag salute.
Oh, hold on. Sorry, I have to read the record. Three commissioners are present with two commissioners absent.
Okay, we continue.
Yes, go ahead.
Now we will do the flag salute and I would like to ask Mr. Anderson to help us delete the flag salute.
Please join me in saluting our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now let's move to item number three, Report from the Planning Secretary.
Thank you, Chair Bowie. We do not have any late communications regarding tonight's meeting.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to item four, Expert communication.
Chair Bowie, I did drive by the site for item 8.1 on our agenda this evening.
Yes. I myself did drive by to the site and see the towers. Are there any disclosures?
None for me, Tony.
Okay. Now let's move to item three, five, Special Presentation. Are there any?
Nope.
Thank you. Item six, Oral Communication. Planning Commissioner Clerk, please read the procedure into the record.
This is the time of the meeting that members of the public may address the Planning Commission on matters of public interest which pertain to the city and are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. Members of the public wishing to address public hearing items shall do so at the time of the public hearing unless extended by a majority vote of the Planning Commission. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per speaker. To address the Planning Commission, please complete a blue request to speak form that is provided at the entrance of the council chambers and submit the form to the Planning Commission clerk. When your name is called, please step to the podium at the time and state your name and city of residence for the record. We do not have any speaker cards for the oral communication.
Okay, so we do not have any requests for speaking. Now we move to item seven, Approval of the Minutes of the November 1, 2023 Meeting.
I'd move approval, Chair Bowie.
And I second.
Okay. So we have a motion by Mr. Anderson and the second by Mr. Walbert. We can call him. Please call the vote.
We have a motion by Don, second by Walbert. Let's see, sorry. Let's do roll call. Commissioner, sorry, Commissioner Anderson.
Yes.
Chair Bowie.
Yes.
Commissioner Walbert.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carried three to three.
Thank you. Now let's move to item number eight, Public Hearings.
Anyone wishing to speak on an open public hearing should complete a blue request to speak form that is provided at the entrance of the council chambers and submit the form to the Planning Commission clerk. When your name is called, please step up to the podium and state your name and city of residence for the record. Each attendee will have three minutes to comment on each public hearing item. The applicant or their designee have 12 minutes to speak and will also be provided a three-minute rebuttal. With exception of the applicant or designee, all attendees may only speak once. The Planning Commission may use its discretion to allow a speaker to exceed the allotted time or may ask a speaker to return to answer additional questions.
Okay, so item 8.1, we move to case number 2023-0273. I would like to call upon the Planning Manager to present the item 8.1.
Thank you, Chair Bowie, and members of the Planning Commission. As you may recall, this item was continued from the meeting of October 18. This is regarding a proposed wireless facility in Southern California Edison Right-Away. At this time, I'll turn it over to the project planner, Sandy Kim, who has a presentation.
Okay. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. This presentation is a planning case number 2022-0273. The requested entitlement involves a conditional use permit and development review. The project is located in the city of Westminster and identified by an accessory parcel number There is no specific address since the site is in the Edison Eastman. This project was, as Steve indicated, was originally scheduled for a public hearing on October 18. However, the applicant requested for continuance to tonight's public hearing, allowing additional time for the applicant to work on the recommended conditions of approval. I'm sorry. Specific conditions seven, eight, and nine, which addresses screening of the wireless facility. Additionally, be advised that the draft resolution has a typo and this presentation includes a slide at the end of the presentation to identify and correct the typo. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to establish a new wireless communication facility per Westminster Land Use Code and the development review to construct a new wireless facility. The project site is located within an existing Southern California Edison Right-Away and is just located south of Westminster Boulevard and in between Hoover Street and Olive Street as shown in the aerial map. Going forward, I will address the site location as Edison Eastman or just Eastman. There are two existing transmission towers. They are 151 feet tall and the applicant is proposing to establish a new unmanned wireless antenna communication facility on westernmost transmission tower. And going forward, the proposed project will be referred as a wireless facility. The subject site is a zone public facility and is surrounded by mixed-use 36 zones to the north and west, which consists of vehicle uses, church, private school, parking lot, and open space for the school. On the east side, there are railroads, railroad right-of-way, Mendas Historic Trail and Bike Way, Lexus Service Facility, multifamily residential uses, and a public school. This slide is an aerial view of the subject parcel and the surrounding conditions and uses. There are two transmission towers and the yellow star identifies the location of the subject transmission tower. The Edison Eastman currently provides a chain link fence along Westminster Boulevard and along Hoover Street and unmaintained vegetation. The project site is also located at the key juncture of two mixed-use districts, Westminster Boulevard Downtown Mixed Use Districts identified as number two and Corridor Mixed Use District identified as number three. Now, the area one is the Civic Center Mixed Use District. The transmission tower is 151 feet in height and the proposed antennas will be mounted at 80 feet above the ground level. The proposed equipment enclosure is located under the transmission tower. And then the proposed enclosure is about 140 square feet or 10 by 14. The equipment enclosure is proposed to be placed under the new concrete slab and the equipment enclosure is proposed to construct a louver slat aluminum panel system in gray color. Although the presentation slide shows green aluminum louver slats, the applicant has selected gray color for stealth to match the tower and the pavement of the site. This slide is a view of the project site from the Westminster Boulevard looking south. For the proposed method of screening, the applicant is proposing to replace the existing chain link fence with a new decorative wrought iron fence along Westminster Boulevard. This slide is a view of the project site from Hoover Street looking west. The view from the Hoover Street shows existing perimeter chain link fence and unmaintained vegetation. The photo simulation shows the proposed antennas and associated equipment under the transmission tower. Sorry. Under the transmission tower. However, the proposed equipment enclosure is located on the ground, therefore is not visible along from the Hoover Street. For the proposed method of perimeter screening of the project site, the applicant is proposing to just maintain the existing condition as is. This slide is a view looking east from Olive Street and the subject transmission tower is approximately 400 feet away from Olive Street. The photo simulation shows the proposed antennas and associated equipment under the transmission tower. However, again, the equipment is not visible from Olive Street. Land use assessment. Staffs determined that the proposed wireless facility is a permitted use with approval of a conditional use permit per Wireless Communication Facility Code. The proposed wireless equipments are screened and contained within an enclosure and placed under the transmission tower except for the antennas that are mounted on the transmission tower. Attempting to screen the antennas mounted on the transmission tower is not practical. Moreover, attempting to screen it can have the opposite effect, making the wireless facility more noticeable or obvious. The city staff have met with the applicant since the applicant and their team has requested for continuance and continues to work on the recommended conditions of approval. The applicant has expressed and stated that they require site improvement as condition exceeded the rough proper personality test between the project and required site improvement, such as the conditions to provide a decorative wrought iron fence with landscaping along Hoover Street that is over 600 feet long is over 200% of the cost of the project, which would not be feasible financially. Additionally, the applicant candidly objected to the recommended condition number eight, citing that the property owner Edison does not permit additional construction outside the leased area, which is the 10 by 14, under the transmission towers. Staff and the city attorney agree that the nexus between the project and the required site improvement outside of the project area is weak and remove the conditions seven, eight, and nine. However, the new condition number seven is included to require a decorative wrought iron fence along perimeter of Westminster Boulevard. As indicated at the beginning of the presentation, the draft resolution has a typo in the fourth recital of the resolution. The recital was meant to indicate that the project will not impair the public health, safety, and general welfare. Staff has corrected the draft resolution to include the word "not." Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the planning case number 2022-0273 with the approval of recommended conditions. This concludes my presentation and I can answer any questions. Additionally, applicants are in attendance and they can ask more technical, specific questions if you have those questions.
Thank you. Do any other commissioners have any questions for the staff?
I have a question, Chair Bowie. Sandy, if you could go back just maybe four slides right there, okay? On the left, we see, I'm not sure what we're looking at. It looks like there's a decorative wrought iron fence, but then it looks like there's slats in the fence or...
Okay, so I did not have, I wasn't provided with a wrought iron.
Okay.
So I used the previous one I just indicated. And I don't know if you recall the previous similar project.
Yes.
That came before you. So it's a similar wrought iron type of fence.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Walbert, do you have any?
Thanks, Tony. Yes, the proposed wrought iron fence, I think you said item seven? Or I can't remember exactly how you phrased it. Seven, eight, and nine were gotten rid of on the proposal and then seven's been replaced now with fencing. Is that correct?
Correct. So seven and nine, I'm sorry, seven. I'm sorry, let me go back to my...
So it was the fencing that changed?
I'm sorry. Number seven dealt with the decorative wrought iron fence. Number eight also, number eight dealt with the exterior lighting. Number nine dealt with landscaping. So those seven original conditions were removed and number seven was replaced to provide decorative wrought iron fence along Westminster Boulevard.
Okay, because the original seven, I guess it was dated October 18. So the October 18 one that I'm looking at, item number seven, has been replaced with not the 610 feet of fence along Westminster and Hoover. It's just along Westminster Village.
Correct.
Okay. And then one other question I had, I noticed in the documentation, there is a radio frequency propagation map that was dated November 30, 2021. And on page three of that, it looks like, I know it's not part of your presentation, but I know it's in the packet that we've received. It looks like there's a proposed total of eight towers that are eventually going to happen from Dish Wireless. Is that correct? Is that what they've indicated to you?
You could ask that specific question to the applicant. They may be able to provide better answer than I can.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
I have a question to you. Regarding to the support of the proposed antenna to the structure, I did not see any structural drawing here, which has the detail of mounting and the safety factor of that because it might be the issue about safety. Can you direct me to which detail that applicant submit to you?
Typically, the detailed construction plans are provided during the plan check. So it may not provide those details. However, if you are interested in it, we may be able to provide that for you during the plan check.
Just to add to what Sandy's saying, the Planning Commission's role really in these matters is the land use, the use of this facility. If the Planning Commission feels it's appropriate, since it's a conditional use permit, you would be approving the use. The details of how it's attached would come at a later time or be subject to the review of the Building Department and in some cases, Public Works Department and then also the Orange County Fire Authority. But it's not really something that typically the Planning Commission looks at simply because it's not under their jurisdiction, review authority. But assuredly, if the Planning Commission does approve this conditional use permit, like all conditional use permits, they are subject to obtain the appropriate construction permits. And during that process, they are required to prove to the city and the other agencies that they're in full compliance with all those safety regulations.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Well, we don't have any more questions, so we can go to the next item and open to the public.
We have two speaker cards for item 8.1. The first one would be from the applicant, Brian Dilleri, and the second speaker would be Norman McLeod. So Brian Dilleri, please step up to the podium.
Hello?
There we go. Oh, sorry about that. Good evening, Chair, Commissioners. My name is Brian Dilleri. I represent Dish Wireless in this regard. I'm from, well, I'm in Placentia at this moment. And I would like to just discuss about this project. So this is not the first time I've come to you for an Edison Right-Away project. I do not know how many more I have in your city, but if that comes up, I will gladly come back in here and talk to you about that project as well. So this is going to be project number three in regards to an Edison Right-Away tower that was going to be constructed within the city limits of Westminster. It is part of our grand project of kind of creating a network for Dish Wireless customers to utilize. to utilize a robust and continuous network throughout Southern California. This is just one of many projects that are slated for the, not only for the city, but also for the region. In regards to this development, and specifically, we have worked in conjunction with the city in regards to the design and the retrospect of the fact that the city has recently done a update to the zoning mapping to have this kind of your downtown area be a little bit more developed. And so with that, we took that into consideration, but also we are actually excited by that surprise from the city, because by us having our facility so close to your downtown, it will actually allow us to actually get to customers, and actually, they will be able to have faster and more reliant coverage since they will be near the facility itself. So since on the mapping, it showed that you're going to be having mixed use eventually come into the area. When people are home, they're going to be using their cell phone, so they'll have that perfect connection right to that's Howard, that's not even half a mile away. We hope that that will bring more customers to Dish and ensure that we are a good, not only a good provider, but also a good neighbor in regards to creating this kind of safe and also robust network. With that being said, Sandy has also indicated that because it's an Edison Tower, we cannot stealth it. Stealthing it would kind of detract from the fact that we're trying to hide it, because we're making it bigger. But besides that, Southern California Edison does not allow any stealthing of any type. This is to protect so that if a power line were to come down, the likelihood of it touching our antennas is lower if the massing is not so large. Also, we have to take into account that adding more material on the tower actually puts more strain on that tower. So the lighter it is, the simpler it is, then the likelihood that it will withstand forces such as wind or seismic and such. And this has been studied ad here by the, by not only Southern California Edison, but also by California Public Utility Commission, which Southern California Edison is underneath theirs when it comes to engineering standards and also for building standards. With respect to the ground facility, if you notice that this one is going to be a slatted aluminum fence. We moved away from the CMU walls, they're very blocky, they're very, they're very prone to just decay over the time. We've provided instead an aluminum slatted fence. It's going to be a panel fence. It's very light, but it also allows some airway through the equipment, so that way there's no likelihood of overheating, but also stealths the facility completely in terms of frontal view or from the sides. We have indicated to staff that we would be open to painting it gray or painting it green. We've gone back and forth with this color suggestion. I know Sandy and I can't decide. We're more than happy to accommodate whatever the planning commission feels is deemed more appropriate. The reason that we went between gray and green is because the church has a nice little green space next to our tower, and so if we made it green, then it would match that, and so likelihood of it being seen is lower. But then at the same time, it is a blacktop parcel, and so having it gray or kind of like that heather or darker gray would actually let it fade into the vastness of the parking lot. And so with that, Dish Wireless is willing to have that facility painted gray on the outside of the screening or have it green so that it matches the nearby landscaped area by the church. In regards to the conditions seven, eight, and nine that was discussed earlier, Dish Wireless made it known that the original conditions were going to be onerous to us in regards to the budget in which we are going to be producing this facility, and then the externalities, which are not needed for our commercial use, was going to be more than our budget for the initial project, and not just a small substantial amount, but actually doubling or tripling the entire budget completely in order to build this facility. So we asked the staff to remove that, and they were willing to, and they saw that there was no need to add that additional conditions. In regards to Chairman Bowie's comment about the construction of the project, Steve is correct in that we will be going through building and planning or building and safety to ensure that it is in compliance. But additionally, our plans are submitted to Edison. Edison has their own engineering department, they have to review it, and then they give us so many red lines saying, this is not good enough, it needs to be stronger, it needs to be like this, or you're this way, or, and so we go through many rings, many rounds of red lines to make sure that they are happy with it and that they are stamping it, saying that they approve it, and by their definition, it meets California Public Utility standards and also Edison standards, which they hold themselves to a higher level of status than the California Public Utility Commission. Other than that, I'm here for any other questions? Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Walbert, you asked a question about the zoning propagation map showing eight facilities within Westminster. For now, eight is about the number, there might be more, there might be less, it depends on our negotiations with specific landlords or towers. Eight is about what our engineers have kind of projected in order to provide a well-rounded network so that people don't get drop calls and they have access to facilities, not only access to one tower, but to multiple towers. In wireless, there is a thing called handoff, and so when you move about, it goes from one tower to the other. In order for that to happen, towers need to be in close proximity to each other. The sweet spot is about half mile to one mile. It can stretch a little bit more or less depending on the density of the area. So taller the area is with more trees, more skyscrapers, then that kind of radius gets diminished. Downtown LA, they're everywhere, but in Orange County, we can kind of do a half mile to one mile depending on the density of the area. And additionally, it would also change based off of the usage of that area. If we notice one area is experiencing more, people are actually logging on to that area, then we'll either add additional antennas, or we'll just see if we can add additional towers nearby to lessen the load on that one facility. So the whole point is to create this network so that it can work in conjunction, and so you can have that seamless connection of to the wireless, to your cellphone and to everything else that we've all been accustomed to in the last five years, because we don't know what roaming is anymore. So, and so that is the whole purpose of providing the zoning propagation map is to show what is our extent as of right now. It might change, and some of those might be colocations. I believe one of them that is a colocation, actually something that Commissioner Anderson worked on in the past, it was the tower on the cemetery. So I believe that's one of them that's going to be a colocation in either now or in the near future. And so we are working with colocations, we're not just trying to build up new facilities. We're trying to make sure that we are integrating into the community so that it doesn't need to be out in the open, but in some instances, like this one, there was no colocation nearby that would provide us with the same height that we need in order to provide a nice umbrella of coverage. And so with this, we reached out to Southern California Edison to provide that for us. Other than that, I have nothing else to say, except if you have any questions, I'm here.
Okay.
Thank you. We have the second speaker.
Okay.
Norman McLeod.
Good evening, Chair and Commission. Norman McLeod, zoning manager with Dish Wireless. Pretty thorough presentation. Dish Wireless is here to change the world communicates, and that effort is to co-locate on existing infrastructures such as this SCE tower as you see tonight. We've worked collaboratively with staff over the last year, so much longer than we'd like to be. We have mandates to launch and offer broadband services to the community within certain timeframes, and our goal is to be on air and providing services, broadband services to your community within a certain timeframe, and that's what we're pushed for. So we've been very patient, working closely with staff to make this site more palatable to the jurisdiction. I do want to speak to the three conditions that were removed. That was done on my feedback and speaking to proportionality, it's not so much on a financial proportionality, it's on a site developmental site proportionality, in that we've had two other sites we work with staff, we put screening in front of those facilities along those SCE corridors, being a tenant to the landlord, SCE, who in fact should be obviously the ones responsible for the maintenance and, you know, the maintenance and upkeep of that particular parcel. Dish Wireless has stepped forward to do so, to meet those conditions by the staff, and we did so in those prior two sites within the SCE easement. And to that point, I'm looking at this particular site, if you could go back to the slide presentation to give you kind of a perspective of what we're looking at. If you're familiar with the other two locations, those are right in the heart of a low-density residential zone. One gentleman I spoke to after the meeting was concerned about dumping and, you know, finding stuff that was left in the right-of-way. If you remember the one gentleman there at the last public hearing we had, he spoke to the easement there, the right-of-way that SCE owns, and the maintenance and, you know, upkeep of that location. This particular site is much different. It's somewhat apples and oranges, if you will. This site is a commercial, more industrial, there's a right-of-way spur for the, you know, BNSF, the railroad right there as well. This parcel is utilized as a parking lot for Honda, I believe. It's very utilitarian in its nature. This particular parcel is 80,000 or 78,000 square feet. Our facility takes up about 140 square feet. So proportionality in that respect is much greater. 200% in terms of cost, I can't see, think of the percentages in terms of square footage impact, our footprint, our space within that footprint of that existing tower. The tower is about a 730 square foot footprint, we're 130, 40 square, 130 or 140 feet within that 730 square. So we're within the shadow of the footprint of that existing tower. So going back to the, I'm sorry, the right-of-way picture, if you could, the slide that was shown, there's someone walking across the front there. It's for the photos, and there you go. This shows you along Westminster Boulevard. The landscape is actually pretty well maintained, and we searched high and near and trying to find out who maintained that parcel or that street frontage. It looks, can I speak longer? Is that okay?
Yes.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. So in that, the landscaping is very well maintained. The other two sites were not. Granted, we went in, we cleaned it up. I think you made a mention on the last public hearing that the fencing had not been put up. I sent an email tonight to Stephen to Sandy showing that we did finish the fencing along Monroe Street, I believe, in the site there at that location. So the fencing looks really, really fine, it's very well cleaned up. This particular location, though, to my mind, to my perspective, it doesn't need any beautification, it doesn't need any fencing, doesn't need any wrought iron fence. It's landscaped as it is, it's pretty well maintained, and cars go by there about 40 miles an hour, not really time to stop and look and see. There's a little, I believe it's 560 feet back from Westminster and about 220 feet from Hoover, so it's really far removed from public rights of way. So again, if you look at, with a set of eyes looking at the Hoover Street and Westminster property here and the ones that were on Hile, that particularly, they do not, there's no comparison there. They're apples and oranges, if you will. One is a short, smaller location within a residential area, it's got a landscape business on it, somewhat overgrown. We went in, we cleaned it up, we put a new fence in for the city to make it pretty. This particular instance, this particular site, I would say, I would request that you remove condition number seven as well. Leave it as it is. We'll screen, we'll put some wood green slats in there to avoid any future visibility into the property, if you will, and much, you know, half the time, place is full of cars anyway, so you'll be able to see the equipment cabinet at the base of that tower. So looking at one site, I would say, put another set of glasses looking at this site, they're not both the same in terms of their scale or scope. They're two different characteristics in these two instances. So I appreciate your time this evening. If there's any questions you want to ask me about this site or the previous sites we helped to improve, by all means, I'm here to answer them for you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I had a question, Chair Bowie. So your intent is just to leave the landscaping that's there?
Correct.
If a wrought iron fence were to be installed, the landscaping would remain?
That's the goal. If we were to have to follow suit to the condition of approval, if you decide not to remove that condition tonight, we'd follow suit to that, but I'm putting, I'm going on the record that given the appearance of this particular location, not really necessitating any sort of improvements, it looks fine to me. It's a well-maintained, it's well-manicured, the landscaping is in good, it's good condition. And also the characteristics of this utility type of corridor as a parking lot, you know, and as a utility structure for transmission wires as well. It's a very utilitarian corridor right there, and to put money and effort and time and resources into a wrought iron fence that I feel is not applicable or necessary for this particular location, I would request that that condition be removed as well. The other two sites, they're underway, we've got fencing already in place on one site there on Monroe. It's a good installation, it's a good cleaned up way of looking at it, from what it used to look like, I should say, what it used to look like, and it's right there in the middle of a residential area, right there in the middle of a neighborhood. So I think the neighbors can appreciate that. And again, going back to the gentleman I spoke to in the prior meeting, he was concerned about dumping and things of that nature, someone just throwing their waste out on the street there, but we're out there, we're improving that right of way as well, and that's right in the middle of a neighborhood as well. So this site, I would say, please remove condition number seven. Thank you. Any other questions?
I have one, since you're with Dish.
Yes.
And I know your contractor, Brian, that just spoke before you, really didn't have an idea, maybe it's eight, maybe it's 10, just out of curiosity, why don't you have all your ducks lined up and bring them all to us at one time? Why are we doing one at a time?
It'd be great to go in and just, obviously, speed to market is critical to us. If we could just come in with seven applications and come to one hearing and have seven items in a row, I'm all on board for that, but you have a lot of variables to deal with. If you have landlords on specific locations, different landlords, different negotiations, development criteria, zoning criteria, what's palatable, what's feasible with the development standards of the jurisdiction, height, color, space, so it all boils down to the feasibility of a location. Is it constructable as well? So you've got leasing, zoning, and construction. Those are three issues that we deal with on a site, side-by-side basis. They're all in different stages, and that's the problem, so to speak, but to your point, I would love to bring them in. I've done this in the cities and counties of LA, where we've got these huge footprints and these master plans coming in, and those are the more mature wireless facility, wireless carriers, they have their network already plotted out, so they know specifically which ones we need to cite, right here at specific corners of the street. You know, they know that those are infill properties that need saturation and coverage. So they have a pre-planned, or a pre-existing network that they have to create a more robust system.
So does Dish have a plan? I mean, where are we at with this? Because it seems like it's, we're putting the cart before the horse. Do you actually have a plan for our city?
Yeah, we actually, we absolutely do have a plan.
So how many facilities total are we going to be asked to be putting in?
I would say it's about seven sites.
Okay.
About seven sites. We've come to you with three at this time.
So four more.
Four more. Well, I say four more as of today, but as tomorrow, it's a living, breathing network. You know, as you say, as your city gentrifies and you densify the population, that's what Dish is here for, to provide that coverage and broadband services to the community, to give you broadband, to give you capacity, so the number of users go up. You need that capacity, and that's what Dish is there for.
Right.
We're here to change the way the world communicates. Sounds kind of corny, but we are. It's a cloud-native, high-band, I should say, I should say, a high-capacity system with high speeds, and we're state-of-the-art.
Sorry to interrupt. You said you have, you have specific time requests for a timeframe to get to market. What is that timeframe?
The first round was June 14th of last summer, and this one is now June 2024.
Okay.
Another round of getting us to a higher percentage of coverage across the nation. We reached the 70% goal last June, and this June, we're getting closer to 75%. The number drops to 5%, only 25% more, but that's a lot from between now, actually 2025, so between 23 and 25, we had to grow the system about up to 75% of the nation, just to satisfy the mandates by the FCC to avoid any kind of penalties, you know, that can be imposed upon us as a wireless provider. So we're here to get on air to provide services.
Of the four remaining towers that are, you know, on suspect or on potential plan, have those already been submitted to the city?
No, they have not.
So this is number three and?
I believe they have. I believe they have not. One has, I'm sorry, one has, that's the four.
I believe we have two.
Two more?
Sure. If I may.
Go ahead.
When we come up to you to propose a new project, these are for only CUP projects. They're, the code allows us to administratively go through. Sandy and I have a few under our belt already, so.
Any idea of left?
Have, you have two left.
Two.
Right now.
Correct.
I have one more that's in the pipeline.
I don't know.
Let's not get in the guessing game. What I want to do for you is...
Here's my point, here's my point of question.
I can get you a map of both the CUPs and the 6409 filings. That's the full picture. I'm not going to give you a piecemeal of what CUPs are and what the 6409s, you know, eligible facility requests are. I'm going to give you a full picture of what yours should anticipate.
Here, here's the reason why I'm asking this line of questioning, is a couple of things. Number one, last time you guys were here, we voted, we voted five to oh to give you the CUP on the last tower, just on the other side of the 405. There were already problems with the first site that Commissioner Anderson brought up. You hadn't done certain things that you had agreed to. And now we're finally getting around to getting those fences. And well, we started off with concrete block walls around the base of our towers and the base of our equipment. Now we're switching to aluminum. I want to know if we're going to be able to get some consistency here, because it seems like the last three have all been Edison towers, and now we're coming up with different things for each housing to contain your equipment at the base of the tower. I don't necessarily think that's a great idea to have inconsistency on these projects. So I'm trying to find out how many more are coming down the pipe and what we're going to be asked for. And are the rest of them all proposed Edison towers? Are they going to be specific mixed use with other, other vendors? You know, those kinds of questions I want to get straight so that we can come to some conclusions and maybe actually move forward in a consistent pattern with how we're going to, if we are asked to, allow these CUPs to happen. So, that being said, is aluminum the new standard around your equipment? And are you willing to retrofit the first two to match the aluminum?
Well, I, I respect that question or questions, and I, to speak to consistency between site to site to site, I would love to come to the city. We have an actual standard, a basic standard for SCE facilities, and that is a cinder block or actually it's chain-linked fence around the enclosure, around, around the equipment to keep it safe. Depending on the nature of the area, we may have to put a block wall based on vagaries and, and, you know, theft. So basically, really, what we would like to do, and thank you for the consistency in the, in the theme of your question, our goal is to standardize the process, to make it as quick and simple and easy as possible. I mirror your, your sentiment in that it's taking too long to get to where we need to be. And that's what I hear every day at the office, is what can we do to short-circuit, short, short-circuit the, the process, make it shorter, streamline the process, make it more efficient? And that is a block rail on the equipment, no fencing, that's SCE's responsibility. Try and socialize that and message that to the city. It's Brian's job to communicate that to staff. Staff has come back with comments and revisions and quotes and saying, you need to do this, this. We try to adjust and, and adapt to what the jurisdiction is looking for and try and find a happy medium, so we're both satisfied on both sides of that counter. Unfortunately, it seems to be going the wrong direction. I work with about 186 different jurisdictions, from San Luis Obispo to San Clemente to the inland empire. And every jurisdiction has their own perspective, own understanding of what an eligible facility is, or a site that's going to be built under 6409, or a CUP for that matter, for discretionary purposes. This is a new site, so it has a little more attention to it. It's a discretionary process. That's why we're here tonight discussing conditions of approval and how we can massage that, how we can change that to make it palatable to both sides of, of this desk. So I want to come to you with the streamlined process. I like to have reciprocation in that, and give you a standard procedure. SCE has got their standards. We can't screen the antennas, we know that for a fact. They engineer this. We don't even touch what's on the tower. That's all SCE. So those are pretty standardized. When it comes down to the ground, now we deal with landlords and specifics to that particular person, or that, or LLC, or whoever we're dealing with in that particular land space. So that's where it kind of changes, becomes more discretionary, if you will. And here we are tonight, talking about screening and fencing and walls and all kinds of things. If it were my, if it was my choice, I've been pushing back on the conditions seven, eight, and nine. That's all my fault. That's why we're here tonight, to talk about more conditions and how we can make it palatable or make it reasonable and proportional to the site. This particular site, we're putting in a, if I could, I'd just put a chain link fence around that cabinet. But we came up with a green slot to match the landscape companies that are in these existing rights of way, excuse me. And so it would match the green of that particular location. So unfortunately, we're taking, like I said, look at this with another set of eyes. Don't look at this with the eyes of the Hile property or the Monroe property. Look at them with the Westminster and Hoover Street property. Look at that with those, with those visions, right? What it should look like, it's a utilitarian corridor. It looks really good, the manicure, the landscaping looks really fine to me. I think it looks very well-kept. And to go back in there and fix something that's not broke, to me, I, I would say, I would request that you take away condition number seven. And we can standardize things, make it much, much simpler, much, you know, more streamlined and more efficient. I'm with you on that, I totally agree. I applaud that approach. But unfortunately, we get into discussions about what's reasonable, what's scalable, what's in proportion to what we're doing here. So that's what we're up against, that's what we're working with, I should say, in clarity with, with collaboration with the jurisdiction.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And if you need a map or anything like that, I want to give you a master plan of what, what Dish has. And I can actually give you somewhat of a snippet of, here is what we're looking at in this particular, so you have a heads-up, you're not blindsided by some of this. And it's educational, too, you see what's coming into your city. You know, what's going to help, you know, us, you know, provide this broadband services to your constituencies.
I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Regarding the electromagnetic safety radiation within the antenna. So have you do any studying to see what is the radius of safety to the resident around it?
Absolutely. And the, the report has been provided to the jurisdiction with that application. I believe EBI is our vendor who provides the EME reports, and it shows it is within ANSI standards of the FCC and, and the guidelines established by the federal government to be a safe level of emissions. I believe it's 16 feet from the face of a panel that you shouldn't be standing in front of. So this tower is about 150 feet, we're at about 80 feet, and the nearest person to this will be about 600 feet away.
Okay.
From the street of Westminster. And the nearest residence to this property is about another 700 feet away. So really, again, proportionality, the sites on Hile as well as Monroe, those, those facilities are right in people's backyards, and they're safe. And we've, we've put those wrought iron fences up there because it looks like that was reasonable. This particular site, industrialized, railroad spur, two major corridors of, of, you know, 40 to 50 mile an hour, you know, vehicles driving by. To justify additional screening is, I think, above and beyond proportional with this particular site.
Thank you. Another question to the staff. Did you send a notice to the people around 50, 500 feet around so that people will know and then come to this, the meeting? I want to check.
Correct. When the, this project was originally scheduled for October 18th, 2023, we notified 500-foot radius from the project site. During the continuance, we were not legally required to notify. However, we did post throughout the required sites.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions?
I don't have any more. Do we have any?
All right, thank you.
So do we have any more questions from any of us? If not, then we can close the public hearing.
Chair Bowie, I don't know, are there any other people who want to speak?
Okay. Are there any other people want to speak, please?
No, there isn't.
All right. So let's close the public hearing. Now shall we go in time for deliberation on this matter? Would you please take action on this item?
I have one question for staff, if you don't mind.
Okay. Would you please?
Do we know, was a conditional use permit that was granted for the parking lot of Honda cars that's below that tower?
There is a entitlement issued for the storage of vehicles.
Okay, so let, who have to make the motion to take action?
Well, excuse me, I, I have some comments, Chair Bowie, before, before we get to the motion.
Yes.
So some comments, too. So we've heard this evening from staff, we've heard from the applicant, we've heard from the Dish representative, and I think that, that's a great process, and I think that's what makes this country different from a lot of other countries, that there's input from all sides and, and it can be reasonably considered and evaluated. And maybe we will disagree, but at least we will have had an opportunity to express our opinions. Something I've observed over the last 50, let's see, well, 70 and 52 years, or is it, let's see, I don't know, 50 years of observing Westminster. I started with the city in 1971, so it was actually, we're into 52 years. Westminster Boulevard has, has pretty much remained what it was 52 years ago. And part of that is the fact that when applicants have come in over the years and they've made a plea, a request to do something less than might be best for the community, it's been granted. So I think what's really important to remember is that planning and improvements and land use, it's incremental. And one small project may not seem significant, but it's, a lot of small projects add up to a big overall improvement in appearance. And so we need to consider that in this case, too. So, and I, I disagree with the fact that this is a utilitarian corridor. I know I was on the specific plan for the general plan update, done several years ago by the community and the city, and the city spent over a million dollars on that plan. And the idea was to improve the appearance of Westminster Boulevard and other areas within our community. And so I would like to think that every project that we take a look at, we need to consider doing the best we can in improving the appearance of, of that area. So I think it's reasonable that the requirement be dropped for the wrought iron along Hoover. That, that's a, that's a long stretch, and it's different than just covering a street adjacent like we have in the previous projects. But I still, I do believe it's reasonable that the wrought iron remain for Westminster Boulevard. It's, it's, again, maybe the representatives from Dish, maybe staff could share with them our general plan for that area. They could see what we're trying to accomplish, and they might feel more inclined to support it. So I would not want to remove that condition. I think the city has gone, staff, and has gone a long way in removing the 600 feet of wrought iron fence along Hoover, but I would not be in favor of removing it along Westminster Boulevard.
Okay.
I, I agree with you, Commissioner Anderson. I also wondered why, how come we didn't require more robust fencing when the conditional use or entitlement was granted to Honda, who's parking hundreds and hundreds of cars and is using the majority of that land?
Well, I can tell you, the reason for that is that it was suggested, but ultimately was not required.
Is there a way that we can go havesies? I mean, I don't know what you want to call it, but can we talk to the other, you know, the entitlements on that property?
Can I provide some? If I could provide some feedback on the Honda World Lexus storage facility?
Please.
I believe, we are, I am working with the dealerships on their part or their responsibility of maintaining the site as well. That entitlement is separate from this particular case, so I didn't include in my presentation. It's not appropriate to talk about different project entitlement with this project. So I am working with Lexus and Honda dealerships to make sure that they are responsible for all the conditions of approval. And actually, they are, they do have to improve their fencing. So I am working with the dealerships.
They are the helpful Honda people, they got the blue shirts to prove it, so that's great.
Right.
I agree.
That's very good for your input to the item. Before we make deliberation, any more questions or any more additional information?
No.
Yeah. So it's time for deliberation? And who would like to have some people to make a motion?
Well, I'd make a motion in that we approve this application as recommended by staff, and that we have our staff read into the record the, the recommendation.
I second.
Okay. So Plan Commissioner, please, take your call.
We have a motion made by Commissioner Don Anderson and seconded by Commissioner Walbert to approve the recommendation as is. Staff recommends the Planning Commission adopt a resolution entitled, a resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Westminster, California, approving case number 2022-0273, conditional use permit and development review to allow the construction and operation of a wireless communication facility on an existing transmission tower within the Southern California Edison-owned property located between Hoover Street and Olive Street southwest of Westminster Boulevard in the city of Westminster, California, I would like to do a roll call. Commissioner Anderson?
Yes.
Commissioner, Commissioner Walbert?
Yes.
Commissioner, Chair Bowie?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carried three to three.
The decision of the Planning Commission is final unless appealed by Thursday, November 30th.
Now let's move to item 8.2, 2022-0324, tentative parcel map.
Yes, thank you, Chair Bowie. This particular item has been indefinitely postponed, and it is going to be, to a date uncertain. This is a project that was actually, a public notice was sent out. After the notice was sent out, there were some noticed errors in the documents pertaining to this project, and those need to be rectified. And that's in the process, it may take a while to do that. So therefore, this project is not quite ready for the Planning Commission's consideration, and it needs to be postponed. So at the time that it is ready to come back, a new public notice would be sent out. The public will have an opportunity. Nobody has contacted the staff regarding this project since the notice went out and the applicant is aware and understands the need for postponement. So I believe you have the ability to vote on the postponement, if you wish.
So Steve, then it'd be appropriate if we just went ahead and, I guess, if there were no questions, we could make a motion to...
Yeah.
To approve the request to...
Postpone.
Postpone to a date uncertain?
Date uncertain.
Is there a motion to postpone the item 8.2 now?
I'll motion to postpone the item 8.2.
I'll second.
Planning Commissioner, please, roll call, vote, please.
A motion made by Don Anderson to approve staff's request to postpone item 8.2 to a uncertain date. Commissioner Don Anderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Walbert?
Yes.
Chair Bowie?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried three to three.
Thank you. Now we move to item number nine, regular business. Do we have any business, item 9.1? I would like to call on the manager to present item 9.1, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair Bowie. Yes, this is the time of the year where we look at, as we wind down... Yes, this is the time of the year where we look at, as we wind down 2023, we look at the remaining public Planning Commission meetings that are regularly scheduled. And we look at the, what happens at the end of the year is the City Hall, and the city gets closed down for what's called a furlough. That furlough will begin the week before Christmas. In fact, the last scheduled meeting of 2023 is December 20th. However, the last workday is the following day, which is the 21st. That presents some logistical problems to have a meeting on the 20th because there is quite a bit of work that goes into what the staff does after a Planning Commission meeting, updating resolutions, sending out action agendas and other things, working with applicants. So we are requesting that the Planning Commission counsel that last meeting in December since there will be nobody available to work on anything in City Hall and other city departments until the first of the year. And we also request that the Planning Commission also counsel the January 3rd, 2024 meeting because no one will be here the week prior to prepare any agendas for that meeting as well. So if that's the case, then if the Commission postpones those two meetings, then the next regular meeting of the Planning Commission would be December 6th, and the meeting, the first meeting in 2024 would be January 17th. So with that, we would recommend that the Commission counsel both, the December 20th and January 3rd, regularly scheduled Planning Commission meetings.
So according to you, so we have to postpone two meeting? Please state it, the date again.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Yeah, which meetings would be canceled?
Those two meetings, yes.
Yeah, it'd be December 20th and January 3rd, Steve.
Yeah.
All right.
We would, we would, the first regular meeting of the Planning Commission 24, 2024 would be January 17th.
Okay.
I'd make a motion, Chair Bowie, then.
Yes.
That the Commission go ahead and counsel. It's the December 20th, 2023 meeting and the January 3rd, 2024 meeting.
I second.
Yes. Please take the roll call.
We have a motion made by Commissioner Don Anderson approving the cancellation of Planning Commission dates December 20th, 2023, and January 3rd, 2024, and seconded by Walbert. Commissioner Don?
Yes.
Chair Bowie?
Yes.
Commissioner Walbert?
Yes.
Motion carried three to three.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And now let's move to item number 11, matters from the staff. Are there any announcement from staff now?
Yes, thank you, Chair Bowie. We wanted to wish the Planning Commission and the staff a Happy Thanksgiving, which is next week. I want to thank Sandy and also Mimi and Michael and Russ for all the work they put in tonight's meeting. And of course, we thank the Planning Commission for the work you do. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. Now, we move to item number 12, matters from the Planning Commission, including A, B, 1, 2, 3, 4. Does any one have an announcement or the comment on this item?
I have two things.
Okay.
If you don't mind.
Please.
First, just going forward, I mean, I really, really like the fact that we're looking at how we can improve our residents, how we can improve the city by providing better broadband, better wireless communications. And I'm really excited that DISH is coming to the table here in our city and bringing these projects to us. And I want to congratulate them for the conditional use permit we granted tonight. I also would just love to encourage staff that we look at the past and see how we can make somebody that's using the property already figure out, like, how they can update the property. So I really appreciate that, too. And my second point for the evening, if you don't have a good Thanksgiving turkey recipe, see me after, I will gladly give you my tips and tricks because I'm a contest winner. So thank you, folks, have a great Thanksgiving week.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more comment? But to me, I thank you all of you be working hard to make things come true to all of the people who come here, especially last meeting. A lot of people come and then they have the very good results from all of us to approve the church, conditional use permit for a church. So right now, we come to item number 13. I would like to adjourn the meeting at 7:41. And the next regular meeting shall be on Wednesday, December 6th, 2023, at 6:30. And Happy Thanksgiving to all of us. Thank you.